We have nine o'clock.
I say that a lot.
Call the, uh, May 6th county commissioners meeting. Would, uh, anybody care to do an indication before we get into the county business?
I would. Dear head of my father, we come before you this morning as a board of commissioners, asking for your guidance and direction. It's brought out in Galatians 5:16. We need to focus in on your holy spirit because we know that the ways of this world are sinful. Thank you for everything you've given us and ask for your guidance in Jesus' name.
Amen.
Quick, I'm up to you, sir.
Congratulations to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Everybody has an agenda before them. If they have any additions or changes that you would like to make, quick, I'd like.
I have two. I need to add a treasures report and a prepay discussion. We can add them both under new business if that's what you want. Unless you'd like to do the treasures report right after the maintenance update before lunch.
How come we can't do it in the treasures investment discussion?
You can.
I mean, gets us to thought.
We just need a motion to.
Trip them. It won't take that long.
Okay. Prepaying, you guys have this in the treasures report or the treasures investment?
Prepaid. And then, sure, prepay was for the treasure also?
No, the prepay is for the mommy's department of workforce.
I got the, uh, I thought that saw it on here, but. C Mac, yeah? Is it off?
Uh, yes, because I have to remember that because our discussions will be so.
I mean, I guess we talked about.
He's a little bit, I don't know.
Um, the other additions or changes to the agenda?
Did you say that the public health was coming in at nine fifteen or calling?
Oh, that's right, yeah. They might as well team in, I think, at nine fifteen, which is not a normal thing that we do, but it was only timeframe that I could figure in and where thought that we could, that she could get in and give us a quick update on that grant.
But the discussion of the grants at ten forty-five, but she's calling at nine fifteen.
Yeah, and I apologize about that, but I thought something better than that.
It is, and I appreciate it because that was my question on there, if somebody was going to talk to us about it, so I appreciate whenever they are, so I appreciate. To say that fourteen times, I apologize.
What about that flood that happened at public health? It's, should I, I can do that during commissioner comment? Okay. Sorry? Okay. All right. So, nine fifteen. All right.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agenda as amended.
Second.
We've got a proper motion to approve the agenda as amended and properly second any discussion. Hearing that, all of the favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I can keep opposed, okay. Let's go to vouchers. Starting time. She's just gonna get on here.
She gotta get on, she's so much.
She is, yeah.
I heard her.
It's here now.
Thanks.
Good morning. Good morning, Angie, do you need to start so you can get going or?
Um, if you don't mind, sorry, I just had a certification class that I'm doing. I apologize I couldn't be there a couple of weeks ago to talk about that amendment on that contract, um, but I'm here for any questions. Basically, that amendment came down from the CDC and the federal government. That's that ninety-one thousand dollar contract that we do every year for PHRC position. And basically what they did in October is they added more things to our statement of work. So, that just means that our staff has to attend more training for FEMA right now and then have to hold more drills. So, we've been working on all this since October and the state just got their paperwork to each county just this past month. So, we've actually been working on the statement of work that you guys would need to sign the amendment for already.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, ma'am.
Good morning, this is Marty.
Hi.
Just a question for you, do we have, I did have a last time, but I don't have it in front of me right now, but have you given us an update of just exactly what this money brings to the couple of counties that is represented by it?
Sure, so this grant pays for our PHRC position, so that is the one that Mandy holds. So, it pays for her salary. It also brings us in some money for supplies, different traveling for different trainings, but she works closely with Gilbert, so working on public health emergencies in cooperation with Gilbert's program to make sure that our county is prepared. For an example, last month, we had a chemical response training. We had a very good turnout with all the entities, like fire department was there, coroner, ambulance service, different things that we can work on with the refinery for all the chemicals that come through, just to make sure that our county is more prepared beyond the, um, beyond the front end of things, so that way we're not being reactive, we're being more proactive as a county. And this position is something that each county has in the entire state. So, these contracts, so you'll see another contract that'll be coming through probably in the next month, and they also pay for Kristin's salary, so the CHO position of that ten thousand dollars. So, these two contracts work hand in hand together.
That makes more sense, appreciate that, Angie.
Yeah. Do you guys have any other questions for me or?
Mr. Board knows, please.
Good morning, Angie.
Hi.
I was just calling, or I was just wondering if you guys were affiliated with, uh, at the school last, I believe it was Wednesday, they did kind of a, a safety thing with the police officers and I think maybe.
Freshman impact.
Is that what it was, freshman impact? Was that anything that the public health was affiliated with?
We weren't affiliated with that.
I didn't know if that was. Thank you.
Yeah.
Anybody got anything else for Angie? Don't think so, Angie, appreciate the update on that stuff.
Yes, and thank you guys for your support last weekend. I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I suppose, um, we haven't even, Garrett and some of the commissioners here probably don't even know about it, but, um, I'm gonna, I'll fill them in and what happened there at public health, so.
Okay.
And everything's okay, appears to be now.
Yeah, everything's good. We were up and rolling again last Thursday at full capacity, so.
Great, okay, well, thank you very much. Appreciate your hard work.
Thanks, Angie.
After date.
You too, bye-bye. So, public health flooded. They had a, if you can imagine this, another flood.
Yeah.
Um, Sunday, I got a phone call from Angie's, one of her, uh, farm, and the fire department got, had an alarm go off that there was a fire in the public health building and what had happened. My assumption is the, well, I know what happened, but there's a big pressure vessel on the fire suppression system.
Yeah.
And it ruptured, like a big split right down the steel pressure vessel, and what I think happened was probably when the pressure dropped, happened, it sent an alarm to the fire department that the sprinklers are wrong.
Right.
And.
I see.
So, uh, anyhow, there was inches of water on the floor, all over public health and, uh, the. So, back there, I can see you there. So, anyhow, they went to work on it and they had shut the building down for several days, but what's the outfit came in?
Um, it's, whatever one she owns, it came in, it was about a little over two thousand dollars for them to clean it up.
Yeah, but it was great, I mean, it didn't ruin, they got it fast enough that it didn't ruin a bunch of drywall. Unfortunately, that's a slab floor, so.
Didn't soak in.
Yeah.
So, I guess ultimately that system is down then, right, with the fire suppression?
Yeah, well, and I asked Brandon to look into, you know, is there any warning with that? I mean, when it's your, well, I forget, it's our fire suppression system, but it's their install and, and their, their ones that monitor it, but it may be on us to, about two thousand bucks, but the, if it failed under warning.
Right.
So, Brandon's checking in to see if, if that's a need.
But what he has found, the one that was installed to the system was not compatible with the system. The tank wasn't big enough, but we don't, there are no, I mean, we can figure out who installed it probably, but there are no, like, building plans.
Do we know how long?
We don't know where those are.
How long that system's been?
It should be on, you know, and probably a mile somewhere, but it's been so long, we don't know where those were kept and.
I was just thinking if something ruptured, it might have been a while.
Um, I think it said two thousand five, five or six.
Nathan, could I ask a question on this? The thing that ruptured, that was the sprinkler system, so it was just water?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, what it was is a, a pressure tank to, it's either an expansion tank or, or some sort of a pressure vessel for that system, but it was a big tank, about like this.
Lucky no one was there.
Yeah, and it, uh, I mean, it split pretty good. I have a few pictures, I'll find them, but it split, uh, split about like that along the side of the tank and it's not all well, it's kind of weird.
Could you, could you submit those pictures in case we wanted to do a story on that?
Yeah, I don't have, yeah, I just have to dig in my phone, I can probably find it. Meeting or something.
She's showing up.
Oh, yeah, right there, you see that?
Oh, my gosh, that's quite a split.
Yeah.
That's pretty scary. Looks like a lot of pressure there.
So, Angie and her husband and, and everybody went to work shovel and water house, house and building work until I think ten o'clock at night, Sunday night.
Holy cow. I'm glad it wasn't like chemical suppression and stuff.
Yeah.
That would have been pretty bad. And the structure is okay, though?
Yep, it appears that, I think Nick asked Nick Wyatt because he was coming down here to get something Monday morning and said, would you mind stopping there and just looking quick and make sure everything's okay? I mean, that, there might have been an old sheet of drywall that wasn't even finished right where the water was spraying, that might have been a little bit damaged, but Nick Brandon was looking into it too. But, yeah, fortunately, I mean, imagine if it had been the sprinklers that went off, it would have ruined all sorts of stuff.
The new store, this is the one stop shop. We have a pharmacy, we have a bootleggers liquor, the deli, the food that you can get at a lunchtime is so amazing, the coffee shop. Certain Friday mornings, there's thirty people sitting here in all these chairs. This is the hub for people to come and visit, have their coffee, have their doughnuts. It's amazing what this area has done, totally amazing.
Did you get those others?
So, there ain't any pulling?
Nope. Couple of comments maybe, but.
There's these two, there's one that, the gentleman that they had come up for expert witness, they're doing an IMI's receipt for meals, and Gilbert has one that he lost, and also a couple that don't have IMI's. So, let's, or it's pleasure with these. Have them call and get IMI's receipts?
We can do it by four.
Okay.
There's not four of them. The problem is you start small and then it gets bigger.
So.
You, it's broken window.
Can a person approve them in lieu of receiving those in the clerk's office? Or do you, we want to just make them wait two weeks?
I think what you can do is say either you pay for it, bring us a receipt, uh, put a voucher in for your reimbursement, but you pay it now or come up with a receipt.
Well, I'm assuming the privatization is appropriate expenditures too, so.
So, why not just pull those two?
Yeah. And then we can remind them, the reason that that's done is to make sure alcohol's not purchased, or like that one at Yes Way on Gilbert's, that tobacco's not purchased, you know, it's not because you don't want to pay it, it's because the board has to know what they're paying for.
Well, it's the law.
So, I would entertain a motion to approve vouchers minus warrant number seven three eight seven seven and seven three eight eight two seven. Problem moved, is there a second?
May I add to it?
Yes, ma'am.
I would recuse myself from voucher number seven three eight one six, or warrant, not voucher, warrant number seven three eight one six.
Okay.
So, either you pull it or you don't pull it on it.
Which one has it?
That is for, is that?
That's that is.
Okay. So, we can do it with a second?
Second.
Okay, on the first one. So, discussion, should we, would you prefer to pull the, those warrants out and have a vote and then do another motion to approve those vouchers to add pro, or you're recused?
Yeah.
We might, on the discussion side, we might need, I've got the warrants down on the airports also, so we might need to do that thanks to.
How we can do this? So, let's do it all, let's do all three of them separately so that Garrett can recuse himself, I can recuse myself, and you still have a warrant for.
So, let's remove the.
All of them.
Yeah.
Hers, his, and the other two.
Separate.
Three different votes.
Three different.
Yeah, or, you know, motions.
So, you've just removed those two, so take back, I'll take back what I discussed on the, perhaps in the amendments, so I apologize. So, just go, the homeland security ones, was your motion?
And, uh, so you're gonna, we.
So, what we.
Minus add pro, does that need to be part of this motion? So, minus add pro and airport board?
Yes.
But I need the numbers.
Numbers for the airport, seven three eight seven four, seven three eight seven six, seven three eight seven nine, and seven three eight nine two.
Okay.
And we can make a mess of this, yeah.
It'll be good.
You're only going, well, you're only going to be able to do one at a time, otherwise you're left without a warrant.
Yep, so the motion on the floor is to approve all vouchers minus the two on my hand, which is per, uh, homeland security and expert witness, add pro, and any airport.
That's the first motion.
That's the first one. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, okay, so would you like to start the second motion for minus add pro? Somebody would, somebody like to do that?
I'm recusing myself.
Uh, we need to approve just the add pro.
Just the add pro, I'm going to approve the add pro by motion.
Okay, second.
Second.
Yeah, okay.
I'm gonna sing bad, but.
This is gonna get interesting.
Yes.
Any discussion on approving the add pro vouchers?
Please recuse myself.
You bet, Marty is recusing herself. All those in favor of, uh, approving the add pro vouchers, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, um, now we can do the airport one.
Recuse myself. Voucher, give me the number, please.
Seven three eight seven four, seven three eight seven six, seven three eight seven nine, seven three eight nine two.
Thank you.
Second from.
Second.
Yeah, yeah. We've got a motion properly seconded to approve the aforementioned airport board voucher warrants. Um, any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye. Okay, I think we've muddled through that. Is there any further comment?
Hi, I'm Stanley Shesky, taxpayer, landowner. That's why I'm here today as a landowner, to give a warning or something, or, uh, that the, I noticed at my place, around my place, uh, the ipse beetle is very active right now. I lost thirty-four trees since October, some as tall as thirty feet or taller. They were green in October, some of those are limbming up, and, uh, it's also, I believe I can track it across my land from west east, and, uh, I believe it's possibly it started on state land, which is adjacent to mine, uh, in August and September of last year, and they're doing it now, uh, the inmates are limbing and thin trees, which is good. I don't know if they did anything, but what I learned is the trees that were green in October were probably infested in August, uh, and, uh, and they completely, they're completely dead, uh, and so, um, and it comes from west to east across my land, uh, and then on state land, I can see trees all over the place that are, that are in the process of dying. The way the ipse beetle works, if you don't know, and you probably do, is they attack the top of the trees and, uh, kill it all the way down, um, and, uh, I see trees all over the place. I have some that are suspect, now I'm trying to get chemicals now from weed and pest and start spraying some of my trees, but I'm just giving a warning, I think this is going to turn into a major infestation if it's not somehow stopped, so I'm doing my part as a landowner to try to do what I can do. I know it's probably not your purview, but it is Weston County and I'm a Weston County resident, so I'm letting you know, I think this is a, a critical situation. I could track it all the way from my place down to Newcastle, coming down the road there, what is it, North Wellwood, uh, eighty-five, oh, you take the right up at eighty-five before sixteen here, so maybe you'll have to wind it over there, I can see it down here, and I'm just letting you know, um, it's amazing to see these trees die so fast, and, uh, like I said, I was trying to be a good, uh, uh, land steward, and I was trimming these trees that I didn't know were already infected and then, and then watch them die right in front of my eyes, so it's pretty scary, and I see trees that are infected or all over the place, so I'm just like, they could, uh, so, yeah, anyway.
Good public comments, yeah. I'm gonna add to that, I've dealt with this, and natural resources is a good place to go if you've got questions on like, some of this stuff, they're actually attracted to thinning projects during the heat of the summer, so if, if you're thinning, they, they will smell that and they're attracted to that, so gotta be careful what time of the year you're.
So, they advised me not to do September and August in particular, and that's when they were doing it right adjacent, not a hundred feet from my land, they, was the first tree that started, and they cut down and, uh, and they were thinning September and August, uh, last year, um, so, yeah.
Yeah, it stinks.
Yeah, it's pretty scary, because I got so more, like I said, ten more that I've identified on my land that are probably going to die if this spray doesn't work. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. Any discussion? Yes, party.
Um, under old business, can we change in the third sentence? It says, vice chair Wagner added the board had no idea they were doing work for Weston County, can we put, instead of they, put in a Toronto County attorney's office?
Good.
And then delete that last sentence, will this get contract for the board? Will it get this contract?
Oh, yes.
And then the other sentence that was, the board would like to add treasure overment to the next agenda, because you've got that back here somewhere. And then under discussion, take out that and put A project, and it's Turner, mark out same information to all companies checklist to all potential vendors. You want my copy?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Any changes? We're having a motion to approve the April fifteenth minutes as amended.
So moved.
Here, a second.
Second.
Motion properly second on the table to approve the April fifteenth minutes as amended. Motion properly, second on table to approve the April fifteenth minutes as amended. Any discussion? I thought your notes were pretty good. Um, all those in favor of the minutes, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Executive session minutes.
Hello, Susie?
Go around all that way, Susie, sorry.
What's my name on it? Put your name on it for a long...
You've been out here for a long time.
No, my name's gonna get out some. You just were talking about it.
That was in the minutes.
That was in the minutes.
Oh, some minutes for something, okay. We're just listening.
Yeah, we just took it, took a line out of the minutes.
Yours were burning anyway, right?
You are gonna be in here.
But not for a while.
What's that?
After line.
Chill pop. So he's helping.
Take your meds.
They have everything in front of them, what they're gonna see.
Yep, I gave him everything.
And I eat.
A pile of stuff. I think Marty and Nathan are...
Yeah, I've had a couple, I had a couple.
No, but I didn't, I'll be doing them real fast.
What was?
Are you...
What is it?
Excuse me?
All these things.
I think I do speak.
That is to be brought up after, so he gave me another coffee.
I'm, uh, taking a break here, Mr. Chairman. I don't know what you're doing.
Just keep on.
She's going to take a break. She's going to take a break. I don't know if you're gonna let you break first. There's shit up in the corner.
Yeah, cause you're on video and tape.
Do we initial, do we initial this?
Yeah.
Delete it.
Okay. I do that every day with you.
All those in favor, absolutely late.
She wouldn't initial it to approve it.
Sure.
Let's bring it down. All those in favor of approving, or actually, I'm sorry. Any emotions to approve these, please?
I move to approve the executive session minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five.
Got a proper motion on the table? Is there a second?
Second.
Properly seconded to approve the executive session minutes of April fifteenth, twenty twenty-five. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I'm an aye. Thank you, guys.
Oh, gotcha.
Hand these down, so you guys can look at them for me, so I can sign on the band. Vouchers and payroll. So actually, we got...
Yeah, that's right, all of us.
That's it. All of you, correct? Marty?
Marty?
Here, I'm gonna give these to you too, so you can send them down this direction. We approved the executive session, that's why you were in recess.
You're carrying it out.
So I guess my thought on that was maybe, I don't know if you wanna, everybody wants to see them before we, I mean, I think it's okay, I could be the client, so... Let you guys all see them before we do the motion.
Yeah.
You passed, you did these, huh?
Yeah. Thank you.
I have everything in order, my name comes up again, I'll be back. I'm gonna stay here just so you have to come in here.
I'll wait till she sits down.
Bam, chump.
Okay, Susie, you think you can come back in here?
Can she see or... No, she's probably given her...
She kinda walks around the corner like, you can't see what I'm doing. That's funny, right there. Sorry. A little rusty, doesn't hurt anyway.
So we're going payroll and vouchers, so has everybody had an opportunity to see them?
I don't, she hasn't yet.
You?
I'll wait for it.
Oh, I'm gonna sign it and tell her.
Okay.
Okay.
I've already looked at it, so... I'm ready, none of you guys are.
I move to approve the payroll and, I already did the vouchers.
Those are the vouchers in your hand.
Oh, these, okay. I move to approve the payroll and vouchers.
Second.
Got a proper motion, seconded to approve payroll and vouchers. Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. There's these ones down here, that's the collections from county clerk, district court, and public health.
Except there were a few more fees that came in, or like, please, I'll just show all those to you.
Here, that's the county road number five agreement after this deal.
I, uh, move to approve the collection for the county clerk in ten thousand one hundred ninety-eight dollars and thirteen cents for the clerk of district court in the amount of... So it would be two thousand four hundred ninety-six dollars and twenty-three cents, cause I'm adding the twenty-four, twenty-one, twenty-three, plus the seventy-five dollars. Second. I got one. And Weston County Public Health in the amount of seven hundred and forty-four dollars.
Is that all?
Yeah.
Second.
Okay, motion properly seconded to approve collections from the county clerk, district court, and public health. Any discussion?
Only discussion I have is we had another, we had a previous discussion concerning the miscellaneous fees.
Yeah.
And, um, just to give us some idea what that means, and they just are both stated as miscellaneous.
I've had a conversation with that.
Oh.
Sorry.
No problem.
Um, okay, all those in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is it proper to call for the question, or the no question, if everybody goes aye? I mean, in our rituals, do...
If everybody goes aye?
Yeah. It's stupid, ridiculous to call for no's.
Yeah, I, I do, but I don't know if you need to necessarily...
What do you have about that, Marty?
We should still call for them, just in case.
All those opposed?
I'm here.
Two of them. Thank you. Okay, I handed, whoop, did we miss?
Where's this?
Oh, these are, these are...
Those are the ones we already approved?
Payroll.
Oh, yeah. And then I handed down the chairman's signature on the Greaves County Road number five, calendar of destruction, installation, I'm sorry.
Nobody's seen, doesn't seem like something even happened. Yes, you are. But these are the budget reports. This is the budget, the check. Did you want those in with that one?
No, I don't know, cause it didn't say it on there, but the budget part, right?
Yeah.
Those go with the AP vouchers, those are part of the AP vouchers, I'm sure.
Okay, that's all we've done in the back.
Mm-hmm.
It's been spent. You see my company? You start putting them on the top of your head.
I use, I usually have two pair on, one up here, one here.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the agreement for cattle guard installation and relocation on county road number five, known as a Greaves County Road.
Thank you. So what this is, uh, I assume the landowner wanted a cattle guard installed across county road, um, a new cattle guard installed, so it's just an agreement to purchase a county cattle guard and have it installed on there for their cattle, whatever, I'm not agreeing, so. But a motion on the floor to, for the chairman's signature.
Second.
Properly seconded, is there any discussion? Is there?
On the, uh, it entered into the agreement with the consideration of one dollar, is that a transactional fee, or what is the dollar? On the, just as a consideration of the dollar.
I can kind of explain that.
You can?
Yeah. Anytime you have a contract, there has to be something about you traded for value. So most contracts will say, in consideration of a dollar, five dollars, ten dollars. It's not necessarily transactional, nobody ever gets it. It's not necessarily transactional, nobody ever gets it. Normally, I guess you could, you could say, I have ten my dollar, my ten dollars, but that's the way a contract is, that you have to be trading something of value, for value or value for service.
Quick claim, do you do that a lot?
Yes, that's, that's probably where I learned that.
Another question I had, it had, under minutes, it states, the installation and relocate, is that the install and relocate of the same cattle guard?
The agreement is drawn up to, so it can be an installation, or if they need to relocate it, they just have to mark on there if they're installing a new one, or if they're moving one that's currently there to a different spot.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. We are now on... Chairman's signature on the twenty-four hour permit for Deanna Steel, Rockin' Cowboy Cuisine. Let you guys all look there.
Thank you.
Good, assuming it has the twenty-four hour alcohol sales permit, correct?
Mm-hmm. She's the one who has the alcohol sales, and she knows what her, yeah.
I didn't know how many other twenty-four hour permits were allowed.
There are. Oh, you mean alcohol.
I move to approve the twenty-four hour alcohol beverage sales permit application from Greaves County Road for Rockin' Cowboy Cuisine Public Health. For the date of May twenty-fourth, May twenty-four, twenty twenty-five through May twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-five, I wasn't sure if she put that in.
Yeah, we should have correct corrected that for the whole year.
Yeah. I second, I second for a day.
It's a day, it's twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty, yeah, we got it fixed. Okay, we got it fixed.
Thank you for the motion, is there a second?
Second.
Oh, you did, sorry. Any discussion? All those in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Yeah.
What's that? Okay, moving on to board's signature on resolution twenty twenty-five dash eight. This is a resolution to rescind the public record fee in resolution twenty seventeen oh seven. So, in twenty seventeen dash oh seven, in two thousand seventeen, they established the old public record servicing fees directory for Weston County. And this one is just rescinding that old document, so it'll follow our new document. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, this is going to be for both, and the rescinding of the resolution and also the implementing of the new resolution, is how it's worded here. It says, "Now therefore be it resolved that resolution twenty seventeen dash zero seven, public records fees are rescinded and are replaced with resolution twenty twenty-five dash six."
Yeah.
He's in agreement to have that.
Well, the one is already.
Okay, okay, working.
Yes.
Just want to make sure. It's worded both ways. Do you need that?
I got one. Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the signatures of the board of Weston County Commissioners on resolution number twenty twenty-five dash eight, resolution to rescind public record fees in resolution twenty seventeen oh seven.
Second.
Motion properly seconded for the rescinding of twenty seventeen dash zero seven via twenty twenty-five dash eight. Any discussion, yes, sir.
Just to remind the public that those fees, that a lot of them that were on the resolution that we are rescinding are statutory, statutorily required, and so therefore they're still be in existence, it's just that it's not, not under the public records.
Marty, anybody else? All those in favor of the motion on the table, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
What's been going on for so many years now is that, is a concerted effort to destroy that nationalism, that is, to take away the ability of a country to operate independently from a global, you know, construction. And so, Trump's come along and, and if he, and I, you know, I'm always worried about what he's actually doing. Certainly appears like he's sincere. And, and he's, he is in large measure disconnecting the United States from that global organism, and, and allowing it to prosper, you know, the way it, I mean, he's, he's headed that direction. And I am, you know, very, for the first time in years, optimistic about how this might turn out.
Moving on to board's signature on resolution twenty twenty-five dash nine, amendment to the twenty-four twenty-five budget.
Thank you.
On that one, the funds from the state were approved for that grant that we're currently working on for C Mac, so I updated that one to include that, so.
So could you tell us what NOAT stands for?
Uh, those are the opioid funds, that's the account for the opioid.
That's the twenty-two forty-eight goes into that opioid.
Yes.
So say it one more time.
The National Opioid, I don't exactly know what it's, note, I don't know exactly why they call it that, but.
Awareness.
Could be. One sixty-nine thousand seven hundred and sixty dollars is the Red Bridge congestion radiation. Google it.
What? Note?
Probably get all sorts of weird stuff.
National Opioid Awareness Training, maybe, or something.
So I know we're not in the discussion phase here, but I'm gonna go, what's the appropriateness of opiate going into C Mac?
It's not.
No.
There's two different lines.
But that one for the C Mac came in after, so I updated it, that's what I was letting you know. National Opioid Abatement Trust.
I wouldn't use that.
Me either. I just want to go every time I see it.
Here we go. That's a trust. It's amazing enough, I have to build a house in it, too.
They need to spend it, keep telling me that.
So.
I mean, because the dog was purchased out of it, but I think that's pretty much it.
No, we have to sign it still, I don't know if it's moved it.
No, just hold it down.
I maintain the motion for the twenty twenty-five dash nine amendment to twenty-four, twenty-five budget amendment.
Second.
Discussion. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Okay, not really moving. Okay, moving on to chairman's signature on amendment one to the grant agreement between Wyoming Department of Public Health Division in Weston County.
I haven't read it.
Okay, I was like, I don't have it.
Sorry, I didn't copy this off to read it last time, because it's so huge. And that's on me. And there is a question here that I do ask, have, if I may, Mr. Chairman. So under payments, section C, the sub recipient must match ten percent of total federal funding awarded to the sub recipient. Match may be provided directly or through donations from public or private entities, and may be in cash or in kind fairly evaluated, including equipment or services. Amounts provided by federal government or services assisted or subsidized to any significant extent by the federal government may not be included in determining the amount of such non-federal contributions. Does anybody know what are matches?
They pay a hundred percent, they ma, they pay everything, it's paid from this big date.
Don't wonder does it say this?
I have no idea. We have no match, they pay a hundred percent. Of course, it's a reimbursement, we pay it and then they turn around and reimburse it.
Could it be that they take the ten percent out?
They don't, a hundred percent.
Mr. Chairman, I don't feel comfortable, I don't like this one anymore, I never have, because I never understood it. And, um, but I don't understand something that we're signing that says we have to pay ten percent, when will they call their marker in? And I'm not saying that necessarily ninety-one hundred dollars work, but here, there, and everywhere, after a while it adds up, so this is my question to you. You can take my sticky note.
Leave it on there, it wouldn't leave there alone. This grant pays for one of the...
Andy McDay's.
Andy McDay's.
Everything, but we've had it for a long time, we've had it, it's not, it's not my grand.
Yeah, I remember doing, uh...
There's been several people in that job.
But it was, used to be like seventy thousand, it's still ninety, didn't it?
I don't see.
If I remember right, Mr. Chairman, there was quite a discussion before, in my first group meeting, about the wages and that, and it was quite of an increase that was given, so I know that we've talked about it on several occasions. I just don't always understand, in, um, the full extent, and I don't think I did then either, of what this grant does, other than helps Gilbert with FEMA. And I guess what my gut says is, I would like to have more of a report of what it is, that that money goes towards.
That's over Gilbert, whatever.
And I still am concerned about when they call their marker in for the ten percent.
Yeah, sir.
I, I agree with Marty, it is in there, and whether it's been overlooked, shouldn't be in there, or it's been overlooked, and now somebody's gonna start collecting, it's something we should know, probably.
If it's in kind, that's fine, I just, I think it should be recorded what the in kind is.
Well, I mean, I don't know if there's a deadline on this thing, or not, it's, it's a, you know. She said it's, she, she works in connection, Gilbert on this stuff.
And you want him to call us?
If he has any, any opinions.
He has any idea with that too, you know, does he write it in a report?
So this term of the amendment commenced on the first of January.
So, Mr. Chairman, could it be possible that the ten percent is brand new?
I suppose it could be. I don't know that I see where it necessarily is, like, has to be, if it's already in effect, technically. This amendment shall commence January one, twenty twenty-five, when was the first time you saw this?
October, May.
So we could, could we ask them to?
Or after May.
My only fear is, are we putting somebody's job in jeopardy? And without moving forward with this. If we're not, then let's invite them in the next meeting and approve it, if it's justifiable, I guess, and, and have the terms changed, and we need to know that, I guess.
If it's an amendment, did we approve the original contract for that?
Yeah, I think so. Responsibilities of the sub recipient are hereby amended as follows. As of the effective date of this amendment attachment A, public health preparedness in response statement of work, which was attached to the original contract, is superseded and replaced by attachment A one. Which is all of this. I think it's in the, I think it's new. Revised public health preparedness in response, statement of work, which is... statement of work, which is attached to this amendment and incorporated into the original contract by this reference. All references to attachment A in the original contract and in any amendments thereto are amended to read attachment A1. Rebecca, you have a copy of the original? Is that what she's giving me?
We're booking.
And here's, Mr. Chairman. So you signed the agreement or the, or the, the grant with an understanding of what it is you're signing for. Then halfway through the process, they change because January would be halfway through our fiscal year. They change the contents or the conditions of the grant. That's an interesting place, especially if that whole 10% is brand new. Wait a minute. That's a weird dichotomy of, but we have a budget. Now we have a budget that owes 10%. I need to, I need to guarantee is the, is the 10% cash? Is it done, is the 10% in kind? It's a weird place to be that you change midstream. Either bring us a contract or, and leave it as such, or build a new one.
Can you have this? This page number here? It's the very first page. That is it. I'll give it to you, but I don't want to see it. This document is an SOW. I'm not sure what that stands for. To identify statement of work, I mean, and describe deliverables and payment structures for developing public health.
On that, the first page?
Yeah. Paying it. It's under payment.
Like what part?
Right here. Go back one page. See payment. Got the A, B, C. B is the one I'm now saying, or C is now showing. It's 10%. And we probably should convince them.
Mr. Chairman, I would agree. And I, I think probably going back to the process of when they come in, when they want the grant to come in and tell us and explain what the grant's about. And give us a clue.
So it's been in there since?
2021.
In this general description, it doesn't say anything additional as, as far as that payment structure. It appears to be more along the lines of identify and describe like their public health emergency preparedness and response capability in that jurisdiction. So evidently it was in last year's. It was pleasure of the board. Let me answer this.
So for at least a couple of years, the wording was the same under the payment. And they have paid 100% within at least the last two years, if not more.
I've got a feeling here, but this, what this is doing is saying what they've changed is the dynamics of how the reporting has to be filed and the types of
It's exact same as last year.
Every page is exact same.
It's just a renewal of that contract. Because there was an amendment just like that last year.
What, is there, could there be any repercussions of us not approving this today and discussing it in the next meeting? Is that just two weeks ago? Throw us off in front of it?
That was my concern is if it affected the job.
I think he'll get her email, but I'm pretty sure they needed it at the last meeting. Because we didn't, that's why she called in.
Mr. Chairman, with, with all due respect, I still don't understand why in January, there's an amendment. If the renewal is in January, so be it. But amendment is interesting to me, which means that they're either adding something, subtracting something, changing the wording on something. I don't have a full understanding of what that amendment means. And if it's exactly the same as, as last year or the year before, I'm still under the the curiosity of why are you amending it then? Just put it in the contract. So what I, what I'm getting here is I'm not, I, I feel like it's, it's being put before us and I'm not sure we're getting the explanation that, that I desire and perhaps the taxpayers' discounting desire to understand. And granted, it's a federal fund, but the 10% means something. I don't, I don't know if we, I'm not gonna get into that because I can't prove it one way or the other. But I'm just not much into, well, that's how we've always done it.
It's not exactly the same. I mean, there's 19 pages here.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. On the last contract, what are the dates of that last contract? This is amendment that came in January. What are the dates on the last contract?
June 3, 2024.
So this is truly an amendment?
This one is inverted and plain and flat. This is the next one. So this is, this is amendment one to the contract and this is amendment one to the contract.
Okay.
It's your only thing that we get.
Instead of getting a new contract every year, we just get an amendment?
It's interesting. This is a, this one in 2024 is an increase from $110,000 to $210,000. This is a different.
I don't find it, but each year, so it started out a one contract and then each year it's just a continuation of it.
And they call it an amendment last year also.
It's not till June, it appears, right?
You want me to find the email from her with the timeline?
Did you see if she would answer the phone? Or if you can find the email, that'd be fine, too.
She said she was in some training.
Yeah, but this is important.
Well, Mr. Chairman, I hate to be a stick in the leg, but I'm not quite sure I understand.
I bet she got her during the flooding incident. She missed texting me.
If it's just a contract, then it should be able to go through. June to June or June to June, July to June. If there's an amendment, I don't quite understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So that last thing you said about the $1,000 or $2,000 and the $210,000? I seem to remember the county health official initially applied for 102 or whatever thousand dollar grant. And I remember her sitting here saying she got 200 and some thousand instead of the 102,000 that she applied for. And that was, so I remember that. But she was surprised that she got it, but that was shortly after. I don't know if you remember when Region Eight Health and Human Services came on and they were offering money to every county in the country. And I believe Horace, the chairperson, made sure that that person got our county health officials' phone number. And she was gonna, Region Eight was gonna reach out to her. And that's when they increased her, her grant, doubled her grant for nothing because they're trying to get rid of federal money. Biden was throwing money off to the boat.
That was
Thank you.
Make sure what is all with what's true.
So I don't think this is necessarily has to be done today. If it's got, this is an amendment to a current agreement that it doesn't come up till June 30.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
So I guess what I'm asking for is if, if the grant comes through, like we used to have, we had an explanation of the grant, then we signed the grant of what the explanation was. And then if, if something changes in that grant, we have the explanation prior to to understand fully what we're signing is all I'm asking.
So this is a, this is a firmly reminder to please return your signed 2024, 2025 contract amendment at your earliest convenience. Please don't hesitate to let me know if you have any questions. That's from the state to her. She said this was being presented at our commissioner meeting this morning, so I should have it by Thursday. Thank you. Then she said, I heard from our clerk just now that my commissioners chose to table this until the May 6 meeting. I apologize and am writing to each of them now regarding the urgency of this matter. So she said she messaged all of you guys, letting you know about this. She said, thank you, Angela. Yes, the sooner you get it back to us, the better. That's from the state. So she sends to me just FYI, if they can get it in sooner, the better, since we are on a timeline. Thanks. She sent me that April 15.
So if I call Lexi Potter and ask her?
Ask her what the amendment is.
Is the board okay with that? Thank you, Arena. I'm trying to extend thanks to your
This line is not monitored.
Oh, that's good.
This way, guys. This way. That's yours. Yes. Yeah, that way. Hello, you've reached Lexi Potter at the Wyoming Department of
Let's go to the board.
When did you send? She sent it back?
April 15.
Thank you.
I remember seeing that.
Doesn't mean it happened, Mr. Chairman.
She sent it to you, guys?
April 15.
She told me she's contacted the wife.
I'm trying to reconsider. I understand the concerns that have been mentioned, but I'm also trying to, to put together what really our options are. I guess, I guess the request would be, why is it called an amendment? What has been changed? Where does subsection C come into play? At what point is the 10% of responsibility of the county? I guess those are some questions that I do have. Or you can pay 100% of it if you don't want. So I'm trying to figure out what our options really are.
Yeah.
Pay 100% as a county rather than accepting the grant.
Interested in moving along here. Maybe we can review this, this afternoon and see if somebody's willing to answer it. Oh. That'd be okay with you guys? Okay. Board appointment, Chaussee for, for the board.
Um, I was, I see Jim sitting out there.
Okay.
Possibly move him up. That's a busy guy.
Good idea. And we can run into our lunch hour with the delivery.